Let's keep quiet for a minute. Let's take this for a minute. Mic be up before I make sure that we're jacked up. Is this, did you hear me now? Okay, pretty good. Well, try and talk loud. If somebody has a problem, obviously, we'll go back over. First of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for taking the time to come out. And obviously, thank the University of Oklahoma and letting us use this center.
Slide it up just a little.
Slide it up. Put it right around my neck with the ropes on it. How's that? Is that better? Okay, thanks very much. So again, thank the University of Oklahoma and obviously, Delta for letting us use this facility. Appreciate you taking time out of your busy days to come and visit. Let me quickly go over for any of you that haven't been to any of these things before, sort of how they run, so you know. First of all, I'll just start out and give a few minutes on what's going on in Washington, DC. And yes, it's just as bad as you think it is, but we'll no doubt talk about that during the evening. Then it's open for questions. Any question on any topic is perfectly appropriate. If you're worried that we won't get to you, I assure you, you will, because I'll be here until you're done. People get up and go if they want to, but if you've got a question, I will be here until it's answered. For some reason, we had to leave the building, assuming it's not raining outside this outside and keep talking. So we'll get around to it, I promise you. If you've got something that is personal and private that you don't want to talk about in front of a group, then obviously, we have to. So again, we need to be here to make sure that you have that opportunity. If you've got a particular case, maybe a social security case, veterans case, something like that, please, please, please make sure that we get your information so that we continue to work with you. At staff, we have a lot of new staff here tonight. Josh Prog is back there. He's my field representative. I think Jill Dory is here somewhere. They're probably still outside signing people in, but we have three or four or five people that'll be here and we just need to make sure we've got your contact information to follow. Let me start and talk about what's been going on in Washington, DC. And then again, we're staying obvious, so everybody in this room knows this is an extremely difficult time for our country. We've got a very difficult, challenging economy, really up and down economy for over three years now. That's been awfully tough. We've all watched the roller coaster ride of the stock market over the last four days, up, down, down, up, you know, you know. That's been difficult. Obviously, we've had the S and P downgrade, extremely difficult thing, so it's been an awfully tough economy. And it's been pretty difficult in Washington, DC too, in terms of if you're watching it. We do have to fight the government. We've got a Republican House of Representatives. We've got a Democratic Senate, Democratic President. That's made a tremendous difference. And obviously, American people made one decision in 2008, elected Democratic President, holding Democratic majorities. They made a course correction, if you will, or a change of hire, whatever, in 2010, but that still leaves the Democrats in charge of the Senate presidency. Republicans in charge of the House. It's not a big surprise that those two sides look at things differently. Probably headed into a pretty big election in 2012 as well. So lots of tension there. More profoundly, in a personal sense, I think probably everybody in this room, been a pretty tough, pretty tough time for people to wear the uniform of the United States American the last few days. We obviously had the terrible incident in Afghanistan where we lost 30 soldiers in a single incident, largest single loss of American life at one time in Afghanistan. President very appropriately went to Dover on Tuesday to pay his respects to those soldiers coming home. We also lost four members of the 45th Infantry Combat Brigade in the last week, so if there's an extras thing, maybe in Oklahoma, but it was wherever you are American, something like that happened. So that's, that's awfully tough. Government, I would say, has not worked well, but has worked fitfully and actually gotten some things done that have been lost sometime in some of the discussion. Sometimes we think we never have the ability to compromise with the country because we see the tension, we see the fights. The reality is, in the last six, seven months, there have been three enormous compromises between the two sides of Washington, DC. The first one actually came in December, in so-called lame duck session, the time between the election and between swearing in to the Congress and negotiations started. Many people know, quote, "All of Bush tax cuts were scheduled to end for all levels of income" in December of 2010. Bad economy, President and the Republicans and Democrats made the decision, that's probably not a good thing to do, let's extend them for two more years. In addition, let's throw in payroll tax deduction for a year, and let's throw in the extension of unemployment compensation in time of great difficulty. And that was actually a compromise. A lot of people on both sides not very happy about it. I voted for it. I thought that parts of that package I didn't like, but parts of I did. I thought under recession was the right thing to do. The second big compromise was, when Congress started this year, there wasn't a budget for 2011. That's very unusual. Usually, we lag on the budget the year before the New Year. And in 2010, for the first time since 1974, there wasn't a budget, written by the House of Representatives or by the Senate. Matter of fact, the Senate still hasn't written a budget in over 800 days. Three parties on the country didn't have a budget. Instead, they're running Congress for political reasons, pretty comfortably. And by the way, Republicans were doing pretty much the same thing in 2006, which happens when we lose power. They wrote a budget, but they didn't finish their financial work when they left in '06. Same thing's true in '10. So when the new majority comes in, it has to write the new budget. And then obviously, it's going to be different than the majority that was there before. Republicans wrote a budget, passed it, subject to considerable contention with the Senate. Eventually, it was passed after several false starts. Lowered spending for this year, cut it by 300 billion over the next decade, but you know, we didn't have a government shutdown. A lot of people worried about it in March, got right to the last minute, but that was avoided. Government was funded and kept moving. The big recent compromise has been the debt ceiling compromise, I'm sure we'll talk about quite a bit tonight. Let me put that a little bit in context for you. Over the next decade, insofar as economic projections make a lot of sense or accurate, we think the federal government under the current tax structure will take in about $35 trillion. It will spend someplace, if it were to spend the way it's spending currently, or before the debt ceiling vote, someplace between $44 and $47 trillion. So someplace between nine and 11, let's just make it 10 for easy, over a 10-year period, we expect we will, as currently projected, spend $10 trillion more than we take in from the federal treasury. The debt ceiling compromise, we have a debt ceiling in this country, it's actually quite unusual. Some people would argue it's not a good thing to do, the government just ought to do what it wants to do. I actually think it's pretty helpful, and particularly helpful now, because it forces people to stop and think, okay, what do we want to do? Particularly if we're going to raise the debt ceiling. Some people here may be against raising the debt ceiling at all. To me, I would say, well, it flexes that way, because you think that means there won't be no debt. It's sort of like getting your credit card bill and not paying your credit card. You know, it may feel good, but you really did run off these charges, and you either pay the bill or you default. That's something we've not done in 200, 25 years of the country. And when you think about how volatile the stock market's been, when you think about how slow growth has been this year, only 28% in the first half of the year, and when you look at the European debt crisis, you hand up a situation where the United States doesn't pay its bills, and I think you've got an immediate disaster in the first quarter. So I believe very firmly that if you have to raise the debt ceiling, you can cut the Medicare as well. So those, that's a place honestly, that I don't think people on either side of the aisle want to go. If you're in a situation where we're going to make deductions, you'd much rather do it in a priority way. This is more important, so we're not going to cut here, maybe want to add a little here, we're going to cut more here. You want to be able to go through it systematically. So that committee is supposed to present those to Congress. You're going to know that it's probably going to be the most covered committee in modern congressional history, and a lot of interest as to whether or not equally divided between the two parties and between the two houses, whether or not it will actually be able to distribute it, whether it does or not, the cuts are going to take place. This is much better to do in a negotiating way than in a cross-the-board sequestration process. Once that produces its recommendations, they'll arrive by November 23rd, presumably. Congress has one month in which debate can look at. And again, I suspect, let me count all the, there'll be lots of opportunities again to talk about this. But Congress does not have the ability to amend it or change it in any way or delay. And by December 23rd, that vote will take place. So that's the process, we're on that sort of bridge up today. Looking forward, let me just add this. What are we going to do other than this committee, and what are the rest of us to do from now to the end of the year? I think when we go back, and let me go back to the matter of something, I mean, I'm sure a lot of you are following if two Congress come back or not, if there's a agenda worked out, makes sense to go back. Okay, here's the five things that the President, Congressional leaders want to work on, fine, if they say that, then we should go back. If there's no agenda worked out, then just to go back and have the House and the Senate look at one another across the rotunda is a waste of time and money. So, you know, we'll see whether or not there's that sense of being, come back. There's some obvious things, whether we come back in August or back in September, where that's sort of what was scheduled to be, that we all work on, and then I think there's actually potential for some bipartisan bringing on. And most of that work around what can you do to speed up or reignite jobs and job creation? We actually have a pretty good set of numbers. Not a great set of numbers today, but a better set of numbers than we probably expected. Maybe we'll do it a little bit better the first six months than the initial statistics suggest, but the things that are on the table that I think probably could get bipartisan support, number one, there's three free trade agreements, Panama, Colombia, South Korea. Two of those free countries do run huge surpluses. And that's Colombia and Panama, and Korea's a very significant trading partner. Both of the economies, both sides of the aisle estimate we could probably create an additional quarter million jobs if we pass those. They've been negotiated since 2006, they've been tweaked several times. One of the points of contention would be the companion program, retraining any American workers that happen to be in this place. Frankly, I don't have an objection to that. I think that's probably a fair idea, but that would be one thing that we're probably moving pretty quick. Second thing would be, we have a lot of money that's made by American companies that is stranded, or not, it's overseas, it's not brought back. It's not brought back for a pretty simple reason. Why are you paying taxes on it overseas? And if they bring it home, they pay taxes on it again. Now, several times in our history, people have done to bring that money home and offer some sort of deal. If you bring it back with a taxable lower rate, hold a taxable lower rate if you buy American equipment with it, if you put American, you hire additional people for your own company with it, we would like to see that one come back. If you're going to just bring it back and repurchase your own stock to drive up your stock price, well, we're not too interested in that. It'll come back and generate economic activity. And there's actually been a lot of bipartisan discussion about that. I think that's a possibility. We need to get a highway bill done. That's something that is doable, although sadly, it will be very debated between the House and the Senate. President would like to see the payroll tax reduction extended, that certainly could be part of the mix. So there's, you know, a series of things that put in a package could probably, probably make a difference. It's not going to be the be-all and end-all, if you will, and reignite the economy, but that would help with the margins and make a lot of sense. And honestly, given what's happened and how difficult the economy has been, I would have created a sense of urgency about bipartisan cooperation. I begin with this, and then we'll forward open to questions. The thing that I've gotten a lot of questions about is the S and P downgrade, what does that mean, and why did that happen? I don't pretend to be an expert in finance, but I'll point out a couple of things about this. First is, remember, there's three reading agencies, not one. Two of them have kept America's AAA. The 104, when they came to reform the President that they were going to downgrade, got a pretty good pushback from the White House and the Treasury. I think appropriately so. Frankly, I think American Treasuries, if you look at what's happened in the market the last four or five days, where's the money fleeing treasuries? People, the market has a lot of confidence in our ability to be paying the money that we actually borrow. And 104 committed, in their own calculations, a $2 trillion error, not an insignificant amount of money. When the Treasury department pointed that out, they looked at their, can you imagine walking the White House in a $2 trillion error? And, you know, I mean, that's like an F on your homework, for sure. Anyway, they looked at it, said, you know, you're right. They didn't dispute it. They said, right, but we're not changing our judgment. Now, these are the same guys that gave Lehman Brothers the AAA reading, one reading before they disappeared. So I had a big problem with S and P. Having said that, you know, we need to be careful not to shoot the nail here. What they're saying in essence is your long-term debt trajectory is still moving in the wrong direction. We acknowledge you've made some progress. $2 trillion is about 20% of what we need to do over the next decade. We made a significant step, so we wanted a step that was twice that hard, we wanted a $4 trillion step. That's a fair point to make. And if it keeps us focused on what we need to do is more than we have done, you know, however shoddy the work was, it will have been worth it. Because at the end of the day, that is the biggest thing of overhang. You talk to business people, one of the things they're worried about is how will you handle the debt? You know, will taxes go up? What taxes? How much will they go up? Will you be spending under control? How will you do that? What will you do with entitlements? Until we understand those kinds of things, we're asking to invest. There's a lot of investment capital in this economy. American corporations have a pretty good couple of quarters, a lot of fairly cash-rich companies that are pretty efficient right now. You want them to let go of that money, and feel comfortable that the environment is not going to go up and down or be unstable. A lot of them are going to be reluctant to do that. So thinking through those problems and how we've worked them out, particularly how you can do it over the next 18 months in a period of vital government, in a period that's charged by presidential election, that's tricky stuff to do. Like, anyway, that's kind of where I think we've been, where we are, and where I think the immediate outcome is. With that, let me shut up, and I'd rather answer your questions or listen to your comments. And do we have the microphones? If you'll give us a sec, keep your hand up, don't bring it down the mic, touch right here at the blue shirt down here, Joe, and that way the rest of the audience will be able to hear.
This week, there was a lot of information made available on three projects that have been enormous economic consequences in the country. One of them was the continued holding of the pipeline that goes from the Athabasca Tar sands to the Gulf of the Vine race. Still undergoing years and years of review in the State Department, it's that maybe they'll talk about it by the end of the year or the next year. Enormous in force of the country, Canada not our country. The second one is the so-called FAST rail that is in progress in the state of California in the early stages, been through multi-billion dollar projects. That is a public project, okay? And it's going to involve federal firms as well as state funds. The cost of that project, before it is even in the first stage, is now doubled from its original estimate. It's going to make it possible for people to get from Merced to Bakersfield quickly, okay? Really important. The third announcement was made by County of Oklahoma, our Chairman Aubrey McFinn, who said that the Utica Reserve in the state of Ohio will be the largest hydrocarbon discovery in the history of the United States, when you look at the fact that it contains both oil, liquids, and gas, the largest deposit ever discovered in the United States. My question is this, what are your feelings on those three projects, and what can you do to see that we pursue the ones that make sense?
Let me be quick and then elaborate. Yes, no, yes. And I couldn't agree any more about the Tar sands project. I have a little familiarity with this because, you know, in the previous Congress, when we dealt with the cap and trade legislation, passed the House commercialization bill.
Thank you. I'm Chalkin Hawes, and I'm a co-founder of Citizens Climate Body, Oklahoma. And we have done a study that shows that Germany and their economy is one of the leading ones in the world because they invested early in clean energy. Now, you said as long as the people in this room are alive, we're going to be petroleum dependent, but like, carbon dependent. But like me, most of the people in this room are probably 60 and over, so that's not very long. Thanks for your show. Thank you. What can be done to spur clean energy jobs? Because petroleum does pretty much die in Oklahoma, that's not so far down the road.
Well, actually, quite a bit. And, you know, look, I wasn't supposed to sit in this back here, but I actually did a lot with clean energy. I'm not against wind power. My gosh, it's popping up all over Oklahoma. We've got powerful farms here, and there are a lot of jobs associated with it. Frankly, I was talking to farmers, and my gosh, if that is in the right, so that stuff runs out, the wind's going to keep going forever. You know, it gets extreme of income in the state. It's been a good thing for us to invest, it's been a good thing for the federal government to foster. Yesterday, I was down in Ardmore, dare I say this here, OSU has built a new building in conjunction with the Noble Center down there. They're working on switchgas, bio-mass, that makes a whole lot more sense than corn-based ethanol. So there are things there that make sense. And when it comes to energy, I'm pretty much in all of the above kind of guy. But for instance, for those of you that might be concerned with nuclear energy, Africa, Japan, who isn't thinking a little bit more about that as well? You know, actually, the President, early on, I think it was 2009, first speech of the Congress, talked about nuclear energy as an area that we could cooperate on. And he was good to report, he actually put about $8 million out there in government back loan to try and restart the nuclear industry, and there's been some, well, progress made. But you know what slowed them down a little? Natural gas. Natural gas has gotten so cheap compared to what it cost four or five years ago, it makes more economic sense to build a natural gas generator than it does to invest in a nuclear plant now. Give the capital cost, potential liability, everything upfront, and it's actually slowed it down. So, you know, that's one where it's an interesting environmental argument. You know, do you want nuclear power, which emits nothing, you know, and is no green gas problem, but your real problem is storage of waste for, you know, thousands of years in some cases. Or just natural gas, which emits and is now cheaper, and it makes more sense. So, you know, I think you, look, I'm willing to make those, I don't think those have been wasted investments, but at the end of the day, they do have to get to the point that they're economically competitive. I'll give you an example, actually Senator Coleman's been a leader on this. We provide enormous subsidies for the corn-based ethanol industry. It started out, makes a lot of sense, but it also is political. Corn-based, you know, Iowa, there's a reason why if you go to Iowa, you probably get ethanol, and at least you're running. But I went to a, went to an energy seminar about a year ago, and they said, we don't even do that anymore. Actually, it's $60 a barrel, that stuff makes sense in the market. So there's one where, you know, we are probably be pulling every, all this up to these out, all the mandates out, in my opinion, too. We shouldn't be forcing people to use it. If you want to use it, fine. You know. If the gasoline industry get up and starting, you know, those kinds of investments make sense. If it's going to be an investment that goes forever, and I'll give you an example on the carbon base side, you know, there's some opposition to John Sullivan's Natural Gas Act, partly because it involves some government subsidies. So guess what? Building distribution plants, you've got to be able, you know, have a natural gas vehicle, you've got to be able to go someplace and get filled up. You know, here mentioned Chesapeake, they're doing a lot locally on their own to develop distribution that works good. Incentivizing that kind of activity, we know it kind of paid off economically and jobs, have an environmental bonus too compared to petroleum-based, plant-based, that makes a lot of sense, so.
What about petroleum subsidies?
It depends on what you're talking about. And let me give you examples here. And this gets into a real trade-off. In Hannibal drilling, Oklahoma, let's just take Oklahoma for a minute, and this is true of most Americans, in terms of oil and gas, we are very high-cost producers. We're pretty efficient. We're actually the third largest producer of petroleum in the world, and the largest producer of natural gas in the world. But we, we're, it's expensive, particularly on petroleum, to produce. Raise a barrel of oil in Oklahoma, it's like, I don't know what it is today, I know a few years ago, between $12 and $15 a barrel of Brent. Saudi Arabia, Brent is that same barrel of oil cost for a dime to a quart for Brent. So you want to eliminate all the subsidies, and I hear a lot of talk about usually just majors, you know, Exxon, or, they don't do much of the drilling around here. 93% of the drilling in the continental United States is by independent, small oil and gas operations. Now, some of them aren't quite so small, it might be at Devon or Chesapeake, because some of them really are very small. Oklahoma has over 2,000 oil and gas companies. I was talking to a guy who runs one of our smaller firms, she's actually President of the International Petroleum Association, Bob Sullivan, former Secretary of Energy for the state of Oklahoma. Bob was in the office recently, and we talked about the Hannibal drilling cost reductions, in particular, depletion allowance. And by the way, we give comparable rates for manufacturing industries. There's a difference between selling with raw for everybody, or you want to pick out one industry and build five, which honestly, I think the President had done in this case, in my view. But he said, let me tell you now, here's the difference. My small company drills about 40 wells a year. Take the taxing incentives away, do a drill about 25. Now, that's 15, we're not doing the concrete, we're not doing the steel, we're not hiring the people, we're not using the reserves. That oil will then be included. So the estimates are, you knock out all these things from the domestic industry, and that's where they apply. They don't apply for drilling in Saudi Arabia or overseas, it's to keep drilling here as much as we can. Then you lose maybe half a million jobs and maybe as much as 20% of American production. And take this state for instance, we have about 70,000 oil wells in Oklahoma, over 60,000 of them are strip wells, that is, produce less than, 10 barrels or less, you know, a year. That's the kind of production that's starting falling into risk. A few weeks ago, I spent two days visiting businesses, little businesses all across the southern end of this district. I mean, I was in Davis, I was in Duncan. These are little machine shops, places, they're producing valves, pipe, that sort of, and they're humming. I mean, they're, the unemployment rate in our state, we're very lucky, is about 5.3%. Some of these counties is below 5%. The aspect of the problems there, the number one is we can't get up, we can't get up. You want to think twice about if you have a tax policy that changes that and costs jobs and economic activity, particularly in Oklahoma. So I'm not adverse to voting that. And remember, I voted for the Ryan budget, you know, everybody talks about the Medicare and the Ryan budget. Actually stipulated, over time, we would lower the corporate tax rate from 35 to 25% by getting rid of a lot of the exemptions. This would be one of them, potentially. So that makes some sense, but you've got to sit and think through whether or not, if that really costs half a million jobs, is that worth doing? And certainly is it worth doing right now? With all due respect, again, you know, Secretary of Energy, as you, is a great guy, Nobel scientist, then no lies, background is not carbon-based energies and nuclear energy and other areas. So, and this honestly is not administration that is particularly friendly. I don't like it, you know, you pick up any one industry and single them out and say, these are the bad guys. That's just not true. Industries, you know, that provide jobs, pay taxes, I wouldn't hold up Apple, or, which has more profitability than Exxon, or Microsoft, a lot of these are more profitable than the oil companies on a percentage basis, capital to return, and call them either. I think they're great companies, I appreciate what they do. So I'm willing to have that discussion, but I'm not willing to single out a single industry. I don't think the oil and gas industry has somehow gotten some unique break to the detriment of everybody else. Last one on that, we're thinking about, anytime, and I'm not saying you're wrong in your point, but anytime you want to raise taxes on an industry like that, then just get ready to see it at the pump. It's not like if the tax increase goes, it's not going to be tacked on to the cost of doing business. And it will be, I mean, tax, those are the easiest taxes to pass along. And so you're basically talking about raising the cost of gas in the pump, and you're talking about raising the cost of, of raising taxes on oil and gas industries, which already actually pay an enormous amount of tax revenue to Treasury. This is not, this is not like, you know, I can name a major company, I don't like to do that, but we have a major company, whose initials you probably know. You know, we made a profit of $5 billion last year, didn't pay any, any tax. That's generally not true in the big oil and gas company. They are paying a lot of taxes at the argument, should they be paying more? Should they be giving tax deductions and incentivize exploration production inside the United States? A lot more than you want, I'm sorry. Let me go back here, this gentleman. Hang on, I'll get to the mic. They're right behind you. Oh, they're not right behind you.
I don't need it, I don't need it. Can anybody hear me? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it really helps.
Okay. Thank you.
First of all, I want to say, thanks a lot for coming. It really is not a test when they come and tell us the truth, okay? I just want to tell a story, a little bit of what's going on today. My wife and I, we were young, you know, in the early on, we just decided, you know what? We want all these things. And so we went out and we bought this, and we bought that, and guess what? We ended up spending way more money than we were earning. And all of a sudden, we wanted to go buy a house. We went over to the place to buy a house, and they said, you know, what's your credit rating? And I got our credit rating, wasn't good enough for us to go buy a house. So what we got to do, I came back home, and I said, Mary, Mom, we better sit down, we better call our spending. Not only that, we have to balance our budget, and we have to put a cap on what we're doing. You heard this, Captain John's people, and will you please take this back to Washington and drive it home? And if you can't do that, can you tell us why? Well, first of all, I wondered if we would get that bill. And I'm very supportive of that. I thought, you know, that was the first bill that the House of Representatives passed in an effort to compromise with the Senate and ultimately the President. And the idea was, look, we're gonna cut the amount of spending we're doing now. By the way, they weren't outrageous cuts, they were the same cuts in the quote Ryan budget. They coincided with the budgets, and we voted for it. It's like we're gonna cut, you know, the budget by $111 billion, and we're spending $3 trillion. So this is not like, you're calling it, but it's down the pressure. Second, we're gonna cap the amount, the percentage of wealth in the country that the federal government could consume. At 20%, and then lowering it over time. This is over a 10-year timeframe, not half, doing it all at once. And just to give you an idea, historically, we've spent somewhere between 8 million and 19% of all the wealth in the country on the federal government. Right now, it's being pushed to 25. That's a lot. That is a gigantic increase. We were spending about 20 in 2008. So it's been a major expansion. The idea was to get back to some sort of historical average, and finally, to tap.
And the cuts are taking place because for the children, which is about 45, 49% of our state, which are in low-income families, 35% are impoverished, the children in our state. And only 25% of the population are children in our state. We really need to find a way to make sure we reserve that safety net. I think that the people who have wealth in our society are willing to step up, but we're not letting that. We're trying to find a way to block their contribution.
Let's look at the president's tax program, though we know. Look, they'll change over time. We're in a big negotiation, do they grind at doing things? Right now, let's just go back to that opening point, we have a $10 trillion problem. All these tax increases that the president asked for, remember, Bush tax cuts were, the president would re-extend it, and he thought it was the right thing to do for the next two years. He'd fight that. And he said, but I'm not gonna extend them after December of 2012. So we will get to the revenue question, but the president, you know, if you, if you restore rates to the level he's talking about, perfectly, he accepts 80% of the bill tax cuts for about 95% of the population. So in that sense, it's actually a huge concession on this part, and I actually recognize this thing. It would raise about $700 billion over a decade. A lot of money, no question, no question. But that doesn't solve the $10 trillion problem. The problem right now is much more a spending problem or an entitlement reform problem than it is simply a revenue problem. You could give the president from today forward, every tax increase he asks for, you'd still have well over a trillion dollars worth of debt. My argument would be, what we are focused on right now are the areas of biggest problems. Don't think that we will tax our way out of this. It will not be possible to do. And I would agree with you in terms of, you know, I can point to things in the federal budget that I think are important as well, that I would agree with, and we probably agree. The real question is, how much can you afford? How much can you do? Because long-term, and Democrats and Republicans agree, I may disagree about how, nobody thinks you can run a trillion-dollar and a half deficit forever. Nobody really thinks you can cover the tax increases. So what are you going to restrain, cut, reduce over time? A lot of this is driven by entitlement spending. To your point about the young, you can make that argument, very good argument, it's a fair argument. We spend more resources on people 65 and over than we do on 21 and under. We just do it now. How do you, how do you deal with that over time? And we'll, we'll get to your question, I promise you. So that's, look, that's gonna be the compelling issue in the next, next decade. How, and I don't think there will be one grand big bargain that settles everything. I've never seen a problem of this magnitude that was dealt with that way. It's usually one step at a time, and one set of compromises at a time. We just had some, we could all agree on both sides, no matter what your point of view was, they weren't big enough, then it wasn't as big a down payment as we, anybody would like, but at least it was a down payment that was moving in the right direction. So in some ways, if you go at this step by step, you'll actually make better decisions. The kind of points you're making, the kind of points that this lady was making about development and the disadvantaged are the kind of points that people need either. But there are people, you know, again, full work ethic must beat out dying America right now, probably, but, you know, we probably ought to look at some sort of, it could not mean testing means-related benefits at the operation for people that have long lives. You know, that argument. And actually, Medicare Part D, you know, on prescription drug, was the first program the federal government ever passed that actually did that, related benefits to income. If you're higher income, benefit kicks in, and a much higher level to be paying more out of car. There needs to be that kind of look, all the systems. To avoid is actually some of the kind of problems you had to talk about. Let's talk about these, and it's gonna take a while. Come back around and say, well, wait over here, I'm, yeah, I'll get you.
You bet.
Yeah, you bet. We'll come back a little bit.
Hi, my name is Sue Howard. I really want to thank you for coming, because Kober just announced Monday, he's gonna have town hall meetings, and I've been calling in hot for four weeks, and no meetings are scheduled. And I think that's a real slap in the face, citizens in Oklahoma. I really appreciate you coming. I'm not sure why not anybody here is really upset. I think that this whole debt thing started with the derivatives unveiling out, the carb thing, and we ended up paying for it. And now everybody's saying, Social Security didn't cause all this debt. This has been around for, what, 50, 70, 60 years? It was funded three years, they've already, way before you were born, or well, not way before, but.
Or it's worth it, um, yeah, they bring it up.
But I just don't understand, and nobody has said anything about the war, this 10 years of war, that's $10 million a month. It was never funded, it's never been counted in anything, and Social Security, they keep saying, entitled. Well, yeah, it's entitled, we're entitled to it, we paid it. I thought that we're the baby boomers. We paid it, we helped build this country.
Well, I know, look, I'm a baby boomer, so I get that. You're in a lot of good points, I'm gonna go through them, and see who wants to respond.
Well, I also want to ask you, who the hell is Norbert Grover Norquist, and did you sign his pledge?
No, it's, it's, well, I did. And then there's probably, look, that was in 2002, but I did, they don't do it every two years, so yes, I did.
Or can you un-sign?
We'll see what gets proposed. Look, I'm not generally in favor of tax increases. I'm not a big tax increase guy.
But this is a different time, I mean, it's like you were saying, the Bush tax cuts, why can't you change it so everybody is ready?
Well, let's wait and see what they propose. There's been three compromises which the president supported that I voted for him on. He had members of his own party that didn't vote. He had more Republican votes for the debt ceiling vote compromise than he had Democratic votes. Half the Democrats voted against, half voted for, he got about three-quarters of the Republican vote.
And then the last thing I want to say, and I'm tired of a Democratic or Republican perspective, I want a citizen's respect.
We need to walk through this video, if I remember, so I can get it back.
Oh, there we go, I got the list.
Okay, watch, watch, let me clear my mic. Don't want to wait too far in case this lady needs the mic again. So on entitlements, let's break them into different categories. I agree with you about Social Security. And Social Security is actually a pretty stable system. Now, it has enough reserves to last the late 2000s, 30s. It can probably be fixed with relatively minor tweaks. We have done this over 20 times. But do remember, when we established Social Security, we took 1% of your pay and 1% from your employer. The average age of life is 63. You got your first check at 65. Only the government can have a deal like that. And the average person that grew it stayed on it about five years. You're never wrong. Today, you can get checks as early as 62. They're COLIC, which they weren't original. If you get to 65, you actually have a 50% chance of getting to 85, and a 25% chance of getting to 92. That's a good thing, not a bad thing. But the parameters and the problem over time has changed dramatically. Now, we changed it. Now, 1% to now 6.1%. If you're my son's age, you will pay more into the system than I did, or than his grandfather did, and you will probably get less out of the system. Nobody's moved any changes for anybody who's on Social Security. Matter of fact, Social Security wasn't even in the Ryan budget, so actually, and I remember talking to Paul Ryan about this, because I'm on the budget committee, and I said, why aren't we dealing with Social Security? He said, I actually think that's an area that we can find common ground with Democrats. They don't want to put it up here and stake out a position too early. We can probably deal with that. And Social Security is in much better shape today. It is, look, but that's not the primary thing that has changed the fiscal situation in the country. It's these other areas that need the look. Now, Pentagon, actually, in the first round of the debt ceiling cuts, took the biggest cuts of any, $350 billion over the next 10 years. And if we go to see what's fresh, it will take bigger cuts than any other part of the budget. And also, you know, we're Afghanistan, but we're back from Afghanistan. And argue about Iraq, Iraq is nearly over, and we're down to 46,000 troops, and our numbers, and our expenses are coming down. If you, you know, it's, it's still a very dangerous world. It is still a very dangerous world. That capability is, I would argue, still very, very necessary. And so my friends, if they look at it a different way, I also remind you, you know, you know the three biggest American military activities have been after Afghanistan, Iraq, Haiti, Indonesia, Japan. But the biggest humanitarian issue in the world could also be American military, which has taken millions, literally, nobody else.
Well, I've been doing that.
Yeah, well, but if you don't have the, you don't have the aircraft carriers, helicopters, and mobile hospitals, you don't, I mean, they don't just produce automatic. Anyway, the great question, not a question.
But should they also remember what Dwight David Eisenhower said, beware the military in the Civil War?
I do, actually, I'm a big fan of Eisenhower's, and drank a few, but remember, defense spending, when he was president, 50% of the national wealth, 50%. It's 18 now, and it was 9% of the national wealth, less than 5%. So relatively, since then, American military is actually smaller today than it has been any time since 1940, as a percentage of both the federal budget and as a percentage of the national wealth. Anyway, I've been locked up, I'm gonna give you guys two questions. And then we'll get to you. Okay, we're gonna be speaking to each other, so I'm 14 miles ahead of you. You were way back there in that time, I'm worried.
I'm really.
Wrong, no, okay.
Excuse me, I have a time. I'll be brief, and I have a long question for you. Did everybody pick up a copy of the Declaration of Independence? Thank you. Works in coal for writing these. The taxpayers pay for these, that every town hall, bunch of yours, you always brought these. Take this document home and read it. It is, as I've written personally on the front, because I carried one of my first, it is a limited federal government exercising only constitutionally enumerated powers. It is not Congress and coal necessary problem. It is a clearly problem over the last hundred-plus years. There's only maybe 17 to 20 things that this document entitles our federal government to do. The rest of it is to be left to the states for very specific reasons. Over the last hundred years, we have gotten away from that. That's why we all have all this squabbling, fighting over this little program, everybody has their issues. You're supposed to be able to go to your state, where you don't have to wait for them to just come home, and they get a break. You can go to the Capitol, Oklahoma City, and talk to the people. The money stays here instead of going to the feds, they take a clip, and then send that with conditions, the tidbits of it. Everybody, please read this. The Declaration of Independence is the first official law after the Constitution, okay? And the Republicans were put in power in 2010 to stop the spending. Why are you all like this?
You know, I actually agree, I think it was largely a fiscal election. But the Republicans were put in power of one-third of one, one-half of one-third.
But you have a purse.
Well, and, and guess what? We spent less in 2011 than we did in 2010. We'll spend less in 2012. The debt ceiling bill, unsatisfactory to everybody, is the first cut in the long term, first time. And this will become a feature, I think, in debt ceiling debates going forward. Of course, I've never been spending cuts attached for that, and there will be votes on balanced budget, if we have to, no matter who is in power, in 15 years. I've argued that the amount of times we've had, that's probably pretty dramatic factors. But I also agree with you, the problem is super dramatic, and it's not, and it's not fast enough. But I think what you do is, you know, I have COVID, I see, all the time, I liken it to this analogy, everybody has the analogy, over 100% of life complex problems, it's in mind. And when you're in a car, and you're going 60 miles an hour in the wrong direction, there's an incredible temptation for you to throw it into the rear. That usually blows out your transmission, if it doesn't kill you. The best thing is to start hitting your brakes, slow it down, bring it to a stop, and turn around and drive back in the right direction. I think that is the process to decide what. It will only continue, and I might make a pitch one way or the other politically, but look, people in office, you know, didn't get appointed. Nobody in the House of Representatives got appointed. There's never been a person in the history of the United States got appointed to House of Representatives. You gotta go and be elected. Same thing, the United States Senate, you can't be appointed in short periods of time, sooner or later. You know, they're elected, it's obviously part of the United States as a whole. So right now, you know, you've got people with profound disagreements occupying pretty critical things. We can, when you say stopping, we actually can stop a lot of things. You know, we're not, nobody's talking about cap and trade this year.
Transportation is, by the way. They're making public comments.
EPA, actually, is willing. But the point is, a lot of, we will not see another sort of one-size-all, as a Republican Congress, comparable to what we saw, our batch of legislation, try not to be majority, we saw in 2009, 2010. But rolling it back, you know, we still have to have the agreement in the Senate, and we still have, so it's a matter of pushing, cajoling, agreeing, and, yeah, frankly, right now, even my friends on the other side of the aisle, who disagree with me on program by program basis, say, yeah, the deficit really is too large. Now, let's talk about how we can do it. There's some areas in common that we agree on, that's what got done in the debt ceiling. You know, the initial lineup, then we'll see what this committee does. But then, this battle will continue. There's gonna be spending going forward, as long as there are three and a half dollar deficits. Go ahead.
It was never designed to be go long, get along. It was designed to take a long time to get any bill passed.
And you, I agree, well, that's my best defense.
I'm such a pioneering bipartisan, bipartisan.
Well, if you want something fast, right now, it, it very much. But I had a group of, I have German reporters that was there during the debt ceiling debate, called me off the floor, and plainly was, and he said, I've been watching this debate, how do I explain what's going on in the United States to my readers in Germany? And I said, well, tell them the same stuff's going on, we've been going on here for about 235 years. They argue, they fight, they beg, they push, they compromise and make something happen. And if you're just looking at American democracy, it is never pretty up close, but it sure beats civil war, and, you know, it's working pretty well. I'm going to go to the panel back here where I said I've done a hand, because they're breaking my head.
Well, I'm glad you opened up the discussion to entitlements, and now we'll talk about corporate entitlements. And, you know, it's, it's estimated that there's about a half trillion dollars in tax loopholes of corporate entitlements that would definitely reduce our debt deficit over a 10-year period. I think it's pretty bad when our liberals in Congress will sign a pledge not to increase taxes and use this place as an excuse to noddy when they use it in the tax system.
I believe that is fair, I do.
Don't hesitate, Congress doesn't hesitate to tell average American citizens that we need to make sacrifices. But my, my point is this, there must be a balance in title deduction and changes in tax law to reduce loopholes of corporate entitlements that do not be allowed. I'll give you some examples. Foreign tax credits, which you talked about earlier, you talked about repatriating the government, that doesn't solve the problem. The problem with the foreign tax credits and, and alternative, and also offshore banking permits multinational corporations and individual taxpayers to, to not only avoid, to avoid and evade paying taxes. You know, the problem with foreign tax credits is with the line of transfer pricing, you know, transferring the income to low-tax countries, and expenses going to high taxes. What I want to understand is why Congress is not taking an effort to eliminate these abuses with respect to, one, certain foreign tax credit involving overstate jobs. There's a building in Cayman Island that claims to have our B and headquarters for 12,000 businesses, and it's been said, this is either the largest building in the world or the largest tax scam in the world. And if you're, if you have, I'll give you another example, if you have an overstate bank account, that bank is not required to send IRS 1099 for showing interest income as US banks are required to do. You know, Congress could change that if you wanted to, and that would avoid having a lot of these people having these offshore bank accounts and evading taxes. Now, with respect to oil and gas companies, what they're doing in their foreign tax credits, they're using the royalty payments to inform governments as claiming that foreign taxes being paid. Now, these changes to those entitlements alone, it's estimated with a total of $300 billion in additional taxes that will be available to reduce our debt deficit over a 10-year period. The other thing that you talked about, about percentage depletion, the difference is, a lot of people don't notice, is that cost depletion allows corporate recovery of actual capital investment, fair enough. Under this method, the taxpayer's total deductions cannot exceed the original investment. Percentage depletion, however, is based on using it proceeds of revenue from the sale of oil and gas. As a result, the total deductions generally always exceed the taxpayer's capital investment. This is nothing but a subject. The other problem is, is that with respect to percentage depletion, it allows people who contribute to nothing, absolutely nothing, to the development, production, and operation of oil and gas wells, a 15% exclusion from gross income. And you know what, Tom? Nobody here can exclude 15% of their rental income, their investment income from being reported to taxes. This is not right. The other deal is, is that when you're talking about oil and gas companies, now, I'm not trying to demonize oil and gas companies, but we're talking about the, also the domestic manufacturing deduction for oil and gas companies. Senator Bob Corks said that deduction was never intended for capital-intensive companies like oil and gas companies. The other thing is the use of lipo inventory method of cannabis, or the facelift, or this, in plates that cost a bit of soap. Now, these items are adding anywhere from $50 to $120 billion that are liable to reduce the debt deficit over a 10-year period. It would just make changes, but however, some members of our Congress say, well, I've signed a pledge not to increase taxes, but then will not eliminate these tax loopholes. Now, finally, the question is, is where are you going to close these tax loopholes? Finally, I just like to add one point, is this, you know, I'm a retired federal employee, and all that hurt both past year is, is, you know, it needs to be a conservative effort to reduce pay, health, and retirement benefits for federal employees, I think it's uncalled for. The fact is, the federal government has a world-class degree in accounting, attorneys and law enforcement, people, scientists, people, mathematicians, engineers, any other private company in the world. 44% of those employees are in professional positions. This is ju, and 45% of those people have college degrees, so it stands to reason that these people will earn a higher pay. Now, my question's, none of you want to comment? When is, when, when I'm going to start, what is the step up to stop this of federal employees? And why are you going to eliminate these tax loopholes?
Corporate fairytale. I'm usually the long-winded woman, I'll, I'll, I might try and catch you, I think you're winning tonight. On the, on federal employee issue, look, my dad was career military, spent 20 years working in tanker air force. I probably represented more federal employees than any other, certainly than any other member of Congress in this delegation. And frankly, I've generally been endorsed by federal employee unions almost every time I've run. I recognize the value of people that keep 50-year-old airplanes in the airs, and which nobody else, anyplace in the world can do, and what that facility does. And I understand the value of what federal employees that tanker air force do, I understand what federal employees in this building do, to keep people here safe in tornado season, and to let farmers have some value, so, you know, I don't think I'm anti-federal worker, and I don't think you can find that in my record. In terms of, and, and on those issues, I frankly, several times broke with my party on things that I thought were unfair, where federal employees were concerned. In terms of the oil and gas industry, first of all, royalties paid to a foreign government are taxes. They own it, and they taxing you. So say that that's somehow not a tax, I would disagree with it, certainly, when, when we pay severance taxes here, oil companies, the home state government, that's a tax, and severance taxes over there, however you want to call them, payment to a government is purely a tax, it's not a fee for a service rendered. The, I would never take a place that I wouldn't look at. Look, if you go to the Ryan budget, yeah, you voted to eliminate a lot of loophole. I think you're exactly right about that. That is actually probably the place where there can be some bipartisan consensus, you may even see somebody in this joint committee, I don't know, but over the next years, I suspect that that will happen. Now, always remember, somebody's quote loophole is somebody else's legitimate deduction. You probably own, you probably got it with a loophole called a four-ditch tax rate, I, you know, that's actually the largest single tax deduction in the tax code. And most of the deductions that go are for purposes, we decided, you know, we want to encourage that activity. We think you owning your home is stimulating the economy, good social value, being able to own usually takes care of your property better. We like the stability that goes with that. We think you owning an asset that you can carry with you as you age is probably a good thing, and will save the government money all the time. So each one of these things has some sort of explanation or some sort of reason. What I object to, I'm going to look at a energy company or anybody else's quote tax rate. But if I see a set, what I think are going to cost thousands, you go along with your job, I'm not going to be for that, you know? And if I see something shutting down an industry, they were still going to buy the same product from overseas and make the balance payments work, I'm going to think long and hard about doing that. I think those are, you know, you look at the tax code systematically, and you're trying to sign, we will, we have, and you're right, about a trillion dollars worth of tax exemptions in the code. A trillion. Those are called tax expenditures, and that's exactly what they are. But you got to decide which one is worthwhile to give a disabled, not we have one here in Oklahoma, gives disabled veterans tax rate. Most people here probably, that's probably a legitimate thing for somebody who put on a uniform, got wounded, did something, you know? So you have to kind of go through them one at a time. I do not consider eliminating tax credits or loopholes a tax increase. Okay, so on that, we don't have a disagreement. I think that is the, you know, I don't know the details, frankly, the numbers do, of the negotiations between Speaker Boehner and President that went on to the so-called grand bargain. I do know this, that he put $800 billion in revenue on the table that did not raise taxes. Now, that had to come from two things. One, the elimination of some of the problematical, the same one, the very loopholes of the current code. And two, the idea that if you take these things out and you lower the tax rate, the economy grows faster and we get more revenue. The biggest single problem, and we'll solve everything, with the economy growing again, we, the government's actually getting $400 billion a year or less than it got in 2008, not because of any tax cut, you know, speak of, but largely because the economy, you know, unemployment debt was around 5%, it's 9%. Those people aren't paying taxes, and they're drawing services legitimately, unemployment, Medicaid, you name it. So you want to get the tax, the, the economy growing again. Usually, most economists, I don't care if they're left or right, will tell you tax increases are not the way to do that. But eliminate, but they would also tell you, they would agree to your simple point, a rational tax code that gets rid of many exemptions and lets investment flow to where it ought to flow to make profit as opposed to make a false tax profit, that is worth looking at. So on that, like you have to work with. And if the President presents a bill, and it'll be a negotiated bill, about three times, and I get a lot of flack from other people, saying, oh, you can never agree with the President. If I think he's right, I'll bring it, flack and Jim, we can find common ground, I'd rather do part of the way in the direction I want and not do any of the way in the direction I think is appropriate, just so I can stand on some high and mighty principle and say, that deal is not good enough for me. No, that's not the way you get the government done for you. But anyway, good, good set of questions. Come back over here, I'm a way back there.
Just a couple of comments, and they're kind of big and heavy, but one's like on the way, and we give China one. We sit there borrowing from China, and we're trying to get that to this education and stuff. And I don't have a lot of sense to me, but I don't want anyone to tell me, but if you saved a penny, some nickel, your daughter's gonna end up. And that's every time. The other one is Social Security, and the government, Congress, leads us on a set of that, because...
Your government, what I'm talking...
...misleads us on a lot of that, because, as you were saying, we only paid 1% beginning with it. That's true. But we were also paid, we would have never paid in...
That's right.
...because they were repaid. But the money went into a fund, and that fund stayed holding. And then comes along Eisenhower, he borrows a little bit of money. Then comes along Johnson, and he decides...